All this meeting, the Redford Township Board of Trustees order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as the Honorable Lily Cavanaugh gives the invocation.
Almighty God, we acknowledge that you will hold us to account for the way we legislate and administer the affairs of our township and its fine people. We pray for your guidance as we do so. We pray that you would find us protecting the rights of all at all times, that, yes, sorry, that our community and this nation will fulfill all of your purposes. Amen.
Amen. All right. Where Christie, please take the roll.
Ms. Cavanaugh.
Here.
Mr. Christie here, Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. McCray.
Here.
For Miss President, it's wonderful to see all some of us in the same place at the same time. So, next is the approval of the agenda.
To the Chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Support.
Support by Treasurer Cavanaugh. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Next we have citizen comment. Right now we have Michael Van Tol. Come up to the mic, sir.
Thank you Supervisor McCray and Reford Board of Trustees. Appreciate this time. My name is Michael Van Tol, Legislative Aid to Wayne County Commissioner Monique Baker McCormick. Just have an update that the Commissioner would like for me to share with you today for District Six. She's hosting a Father's Day Health Fair on Thursday, June 19th at her district office on James Cousins near Greenfield. And some of our vendors that we have on secured already, Citizens Bank, Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, Oak Street Health and local radio celebrity Nurse Nikki. Also, we are taking, we're going to be taking applications this summer for the Wayne County Commission Youth Council. And this is open to any Wayne County high schooler. What we do is go through a program letting them learn how to work with fellow future leaders and elected officials. They learn to get, give TV and media interviews, create youth legislation, learn how county government operates and how to run a council meeting. They are, learn to advocate for issues that are important to them. And they have potential opportunities for summer internships. Travel also to like Washington and Lansing. And just a constructive way to use their voice. The deadline is September 15th. So we'll be taking applications this summer. And here's the phone number if you'd like us to email you an application for the Wayne County Commission Youth Council. That number is 313-224-0884. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So last for citizen comments. Next we talk about the public hearing. I need a motion to open the public hearing. And the public hearing is regarding the adoption of proposed drinking water safety revolving fund, DWSRF revised project plan for water main improvements and lead service lines, LSL replacements.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir Christie.
I move to open the public hearing.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor Honorable Board, thank you for holding this public hearing today. A brief background of what we're doing here. Back in 2022, the township actually applied for a DWSRF drinking water state revolving fund, funding, to do a water main project in the southeast corner of the township. We submitted that in roughly May to June of '22. We found out in September that we did not qualify. It's based on a ranking system. We were about five points shy of getting into the funding area. But at that time, we did not, we did not qualify. Based on what's happened in last year with the, the lead action level that we are on, we were informed almost within 48 hours from somebody at Eagle, he used to be a rep for us, that since we're currently in the ale, we do qualify for an extra five bonus points on an application. So we decided to then revise, amend our current plan for the water main project. And we added a component for lead service line replacement for funding within this bond or lead service line investigation. So we've been working on, we're working together with Waitrim, Kelly and her team. We have to now do a amended, a revised project plan. Very similar to what we did about a month ago with the CWSRF for the CSO Basin. That's a clean water funding that we applied for. And we had to revise the plan. This is the same thing. We were applying again, taking the old plan. But we had to revise quite a bit because we added a lead component to it now. So part of the rules of the program is we have to now hold a public hearing. We did post for this hearing 10 days ago on a township website and post in our buildings. And so today we're here to explain to you what we're looking to do with these funding, with these funds, I should say. And then here if there aren't any questions at this public hearing. So there is a PowerPoint for you that was handed out. There's some copies up at the door as well. And I'm going to bring Kelly up also. If you have any questions from the engineering side, please hit her up. But this is primarily a water main project. On page two of your handout, the project is broken up into five project areas. Again, primarily in the southeast corner of the township. Considered area one, two, three, four, and five. Now, area four, when you go one, two, and three are primarily in that area in the southeast quadrant. Then we're also looking to add on, to create loops on some dead ends on three streets that are north of Plymouth Road. And then we're also looking to replace a, another area. We're looking to on Telegraph Road from Plymouth to West Chicago. And then on top of that, we then added the component to do approximately 200 lead service lines as the extra piece to this project. So you can kind of see from the map what the work we're doing in the bottom right corner. You see all the, you know, magenta purple lines with the water mains that would be replaced for this project. And then we are also talking about different, we looked at different alternatives. And again, this is through our capital improvements that we have outlined in our 2020 Water Reliability Study and 2019 Asset Management Plan. The last phase, this would be, it'd be a bond, but we'll probably still call it Phase 14. We did a previous bond for multitude of improvements from water mains, improvements at our CSO North Basin with Plumb's Gator System. And so that bond is concluded. And we are now looking to do our next bond, again, what we call Phase 14. I'm going to ask Kelly if she just wants to add anything in regards to the engineering side of it. And she can also talk a little bit about the project estimate on cost as well.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Supervisor McCray and Honorable Board. So thank you, Mike. Define the project areas and just a little bit, there are certain items that we are required to touch on for fulfillment of the DWSRF project plan to make sure it's included in the, in the public hearing. So I'll touch briefly on those. Mike alluded to the alternatives. We do need to look at various alternatives. And that is just to reflect that we vetted the process. We verified that what we're proceeding with is a cost-effective solution. It's going to have a greatest impact. And we always have to compare that with like a no-action item. So we looked at no-action, which is not an alternative. Looking at a regional water supply alternative, again, not really an action item that we could proceed with. And an increase in pressure from GLWA, not something that we'd readily welcome to for the area. So that leads us to the alternative four, which includes the water main upgrades, the looping, as Mike had referenced, and then the addition of the approximate 200 lead service line replacements that have been added to this project plan. So the total estimated construction cost, that's including all of the water main replacement and the looping and the 200 service line replacements for lead is just under 12 million. And that's been projected at a linear cost basis of 360 linear, or $360 per linear foot. And then an approximate value of 10,000 per the lead service line replacement. And keeping in mind that this work would, we begin in 2025. So it's not for this semester. So there's a little bit of an inflationary impact in there as well that is considered. To finance the project for 20 years, DWSRF, the percentage is 2% of an interest loan rate. And so that's traditionally significantly lower than the going rate of roughly between 4% and 5%. So it's estimated that there is an approximate savings of roughly $3 million should this be awarded when compared to a 4% interest rate over the life of the 20-year loan. So the impact that this would have to user costs is estimated to approximate $0.527, or 52.7 cents per unit. And a unit equates to roughly an average of 5.51 units per month per residential unit, user rather, that equates to about $2.90 per month. And from a commercial perspective, there's an average unit of 20.47 units per month. And that results in a value of $10.79 per month. Again, those are based on using the full estimated cost of just under 12 million and appropriated at the average number of units per year. And then just to wrap up is the schedule. So the schedule requires us, we've already posted the notice. Today is the public hearing. And we need to submit this project plan by June 1st in order to be considered for the funding for 2025. And with that, the advertisement for bid for the work would probably be projected about May of next year. We would find out whether we're successful in the priority listing likely about September. That's about what we received on last year. So we would be able to, from that September date, proceed with detailed plans, specifications, and any permitting that's required as well. Notice proceed would be issued in late fall 2025. And we projected about two years of construction activities, depending on how the bids come in. That's it from our perspective. If there's any questions.
Well, I guess I want to start off, I want to ask about the lead line replacements. One, I guess that, that won't begin until 2025 as well. And the other thing is it says 200 throughout the township. We have 200 places already identified, or we have far less?
We have far less than that right now. We are projecting right now, the grant that the Township Board approved about last month for the investigations will help us investigate at least 400, we're hoping. And then our staff is actually doing that right now as well. We do not have 200 identified lead lines at this current time.
Okay, so I guess my question is there a time limit on, once this goes into effect in 2025, that if we don't have those 200 identified, hopefully we don't because they're not there, that how long do we have to use that allotment to replace? It means if a one-year deal, is it until the money's gone?
I don't know. In regards to the pipes itself?
Yeah, lead pipe replacement.
Eagle wants us to be testing lines that are identified as as lead. And not, ones that are exceeding the amount currently set, 12 is in the top? 15, 12 next year. Yeah, 12. So anything that exceeds it, we try to do now. But ones that are just identified as lead that are tested via, because we have to test houses twice per year now, properties. So by this point, when this is done, and if we've identified, we can take this out over a couple of years, then we'll have a funding source here that we have.
So it's going to be at least a couple of years we have. We use it till it's gone? Is that the idea? We have to use it in a time period, I guess, is my question.
Yes, we do. I was just going to say that because currently on our bond that we've had since 2016, '17, we just spent the last money a year and a half ago. So we do, yes, we do have.
Questions from the board?
To the Chair.
Treasurer Cavanaugh.
Mike, I have a question as to the, oh, the 20-year, the 20-year project for the financing. Was there any way to elongate that, to make it longer in order to reduce, let's say, the $2.90 that's going to be added to each of the residents?
You can go up to 30 years just on the bond this size. I think it's primarily to do a little bit less compared to going 30 years. But it can be, right now it's at 20. That's what we projected because of the CSO, we did that at 30. So I think we're trying to slow it down, but you can go up to 30 years on the bonds.
Okay, because my concern is this, is currently the Water Forgiveness Act may or may not hit us. Right now it's still in committee. That's also being addressed as to giving residents $3 on their water bill in order to set aside for people that can't afford their water payments. So that, that is why the concern is that worth $2.90 plus possibly down the road, $3 that they're trying to get through the Senate and legislation, that's going to be almost $6 impact per resident. So again, if it's something we can do to alleviate a little bit more instead of $2.90 to make it a little bit less.
We can check with Director Honore. Make sure what we can do in regards to change that.
Figure that out, okay, absolutely. Thank you.
We made a note.
Okay.
So Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Mike, is this project eligible for any state or federal funding assistance?
Not in water mains, I would say. There's grant money out there, but not, nothing we're applying for at this time.
There, of course, I, through the Chair, there could potentially be some principal loan forgiveness with this project. I should have mentioned that too. With the, particularly for the lead portion. There's a strong sense of subsidies and loan forgiveness in this current fiscal year with the loan. And if the funding remains through the infrastructure bill, there could be some of that carryover into next year's funding too. We just won't know until the priority listing is released where we fall. We may not get forgiveness for the water main portion. It may just come into effect for the lead service line proportion, potentially.
In regards to the lead side.
To the Chair.
Not for the water side.
Trustee Jackson.
Okay, I have several questions. First, to touch on that, so is it basically saying that we really need to be already in this program to be considered for any kind of loan forgiveness? That we have to pursue this funding to be eligible potentially for loan forgiveness to get our lead lines paid for? Because I know that they were talking at the state level about helping local municipalities fund lead line replacement. I just wondered if this is the only method of getting it paid for as we go through this funding?
There has been no programs coming from the state other than programs like this through loan forgiveness, things of nature. There's been nothing that's come down whatsoever in the last year and a half. That's how they're distributing the funds, is through people who are applying for programs like this. And they're giving you grants here, you know, loan forgiveness. We also had to apply for the overburdened, or, yeah, we were considered overburdened in your community, so we qualified for a little bit different programming here. That was approved as well earlier this year. So in regards to, yes, we have to, yes, we have to apply for this. Plus, we also needed to, this is about water mains. Lead is just a little component to it. This is about getting the water mains replaced because the bond price, the bond rates are at 2%, 2 and 1/4 compared. We went for a bond as it was stated, it's four to five. We applied for the lead dollars because we were advised to. But out of this whole program, that's 2 million out of the 12. So, yeah.
Secondly, when we talk about the increase per unit, are you talking about that starting in 2025 or starting this year?
Wouldn't be until the, no, this would be until we secure the bond program. Again, we're looking at probably advertise the bid May, probably not till late '25. But the way we do with the, the CWSRF for the, you know, clean water for the CSO, our payment, I think, is still being worked out, but it's not until it's down the road. Kind of same with this. We still have to lock it all independent where we fall into their bidding detail. So I would say late '25, '26 at the earliest.
And then lastly, just to understand, so the water bills separated into water supply, usage, charge per unit, and then sewage, right? So when you talk about units, this is talking about their water supply costs going up and not sewage costs?
What's, no, what'll happen, sewage is based on their water usage. So on anybody's home, that's how it's based on.
Are they different rates?
Yes.
They are?
Yes, yes.
Which one's the higher rate?
Sewage is, sewage is higher rate.
So is that what we're talking about per unit is going up on the sewage side of the bill?
Should be on the water side, but it's also will be considered a bond payment. So it's worked into the rate. So it's hard to tell you right now what the rate would go. This is an approximation that we have to give to Eagle. But it'll be in the overall rate for, for water.
And are we going to be coming back again next year and asking for another increase once we figure out how much the CSOs are going to cost? Yes?
Maybe. Are we? I don't know. Are we? Probably yes. I mean, you know, be honest with you, because we're solely working that route. Will there be an increase to the CSO? Yes or no? I couldn't tell you any idea right now how much that'll be.
Then I would agree with Treasurer Cavanaugh that if we can stretch out this payment for as long as possible, to make it as small of impact as possible, knowing there's more impact coming, that we should do whatever we can to ease the increases over a longer period of time.
You got it.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir Christie.
I'm looking at area three here on your handout. And I've gotten numerous and regular complaints about street flooding in that area. Maybe the engineer would be better positioned to address this. Will, will this project help with the street flooding?
No, it will not, Mr. Christie. The, this is strictly for potable water, drinking water. So most of this work right now is also proposed to be done through a trenchless technology. So through trenchless technology. So instead of open cutting, we would try and to go over essentially under the ground. There's a combination of what's called pipe bursting or directional drilling. So we would not be impacting even above the roads very much, other than connection points. So no, it will not address that.
That's disappointing. There are lakes, as they call them.
Other questions from the board? Questions from the audience?
Mr. Chairman.
Sir Christie.
I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
Move is supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye. Open and close. Thank you. Next we have the consent agenda. Treasurer Cavanaugh.
Thank you Supervisor McCray. I move to approve the consent agenda items as follows. The minutes of the regular meeting of April 30th of 2024. The warrant list of bills as of May 14th in a total amount of $4,073,409.20. The advertisement for bid Central CSO Basin and Collector Sewer Construction Project and the advertisement for bid document. Agreement regarding the right-of-way permit extension of the existing Metro Act permit between Redford Township, Wayne County to Michigan Bell Telephone Company, DBA AT&amp;T Michigan for a period from September 30th of 2024 to September 30th of 2029. The 35th Annual Redford Township Community Festival, June 13th through the 16th of 2024 at Bell Creek with permissions to hang banners over the railroad viaduct located on Beach Daily Road south of Glendale Avenue and north of Plymouth Road from June 5th of 2024 through June 17th of 2024. The banners will not interfere with any overhead traffic control devices or vehicle pedestrian traffic and will be in compliance with Wayne County regulations. Redford Township fireworks display at Bell Creek Park on Friday, June 14th of 2024 with a rain date of Saturday, June 15th of 2024 with permission of road closures on Friday, June 14th, 2024, or Saturday, June 15th of 2024, rain day for the following roads, Inkster Road between Linden Street and Meadowbrook Street and Five Mile Road between Kinlock Street and Inkster Road.
Support.
Supported. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Supervisor, Honorable Board, since we have held our, our public hearing earlier, we are asking that for the, for Eagle, we are required, we were required to hold the, the
public hearing regarding the DWSRF revised project plan at tonight's meeting. We are asking the Honorable Board to please take action regarding the revised project plan for water improvements, lead service line replacements as presented earlier. Just to also let you know, the Board of Trustees did previously hold the same public hearing on June 28th, 2022, and did approve the original project plan as submitted. A copy of this public hearing and proposed revised project plan was placed on the township website for public review on May 3rd per Eagle requirements. I am asking if this board will please approve the submission of the DWSRF revised project plan.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move to approve the adoption and submittal of the proposed drinking water state revolving fund, DWSRF, revised project plan for water main improvements, and lead service line replacements.
Support.
Trustee Taylor. The motion is to approve the adoption and submittal of the proposed drinking water state revolving fund, DWSRF, revised project plan for water main improvements and lead service line replacements. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Supervisor, Honorable Board, in a separate item here, we are asking the township board to approve the adoption, or, sorry, we already did that. We also have to approve a resolution for the project plan to adopt our final plan for water main improvements and lead service line replacements. And this resolution also designates an authorized project representative on behalf of Redford Township. I'm asking this board to please approve the resolution that was attached for your review and approval.
Questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Are you the project representative?
Yes, I am. It does states in paragraph four that it does ask that, as a position held by Michael Dennis, designate as the authorized representative for all activities associated with the project referenced above.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
No, that was my question.
Okay.
My question.
Hearing none, hearing no other questions, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee King.
I move, I move approval of the resolution of the Charter Township of Redford to adopt the final revised project plan for water main improvements and lead service line replacements and designating authorized project representative, Mr. Director Michael Dennis.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh, the motion is to approve resolution to adopt the final revised project plan for water main improvements and lead service line LSL replacements and designating authorized project representative, Mike Dennis. Any other discussion? Let me just do, roll call, please.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, Mr. Jackson.
I'd also just like to give a big, big thank to Kelly, her team, and Tom and Sean, Tom Rowland and Sean, for doing a great job on this. It's been a process. And also Adam, Jacqueline, and the team, because we, and Kelly Clem and Treasurer Kavanaugh for, we put a lot of data together on this, lots and lots of data that the state wants. Eagle is always changing up what they want, and Kelly and her team and everyone else did a fabulous job. So it was a big team effort to get this turned in for a water main project, so.
Good job.
I'll just imagine what you saw today was for a CSO basin, so.
Wait.
Good job to all.
Yeah, thank you.
Many thanks to them. Okay, so next item. Next item, we have a bid recommendation to replace the roofs at the Marquee, and we also have a small recess roof at the DPS building that is leaking. Treasurer Kavanaugh can definitely let you know that it's leaking.
I do.
Buffer office.
I do.
So, so we went out to bid, the board allowed us to go out to bid. We did have six companies that did submit bids. After going through them, doing our recommendations, reviews, et cetera, we are recommending that this project be awarded to William Mulner Roofing Company in Brownstown Township in the amount of $319,364. This project will be broken up between funding that this board has approved through the Marquee Building miscellaneous funding and through the DPS Building through capital improvements. And I'm asking this board to approve, and we will get moving on this project.
To the chair.
To the Kavanaugh.
I move to approve.
Yes.
Bid recommendation to replace the existing flat roofing system located at the Marquee of Redford and DPS Building recess roof to be awarded to William Mulner Roofing Company in the amount of $319,364. Funding for the Marquee Roof Replacement Project would be allocated from GL 101-26501-956000, and funding for the DPS Building recess roof replacement project would be allocated from GL 592-54200-976000.
Mr. McCarthy. Trustee Jackson.
Okay.
The motion is to approve the bid recommendation to replace the existing flat roofing system located at the Marquee of Redford and DPS Building recess roof, be awarded to William Mulner Roofing Company in the amount of $319,364. Funding for the Marquee Roof Replacement Project would be allocated from GL 101-26501-956000. Funding for DPS Building recess roof replacement project would be allocated from GL 592-54200-976000. Any other questions?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Mike, what's wrong with the roofs at Marquee?
It's aged out. We have a bunch of leaks in different areas. It's gotten soft on the northwest corner. We have a leak that's in the southwest corner as well. And it's been close to 20 years on the flat roof.
And they don't tar? When you get a leak, you don't tar a flat roof to prove, to have leaking?
We have done some patching. Matter of fact, when they did, when they did the Town Hall roof in '22, we had them touch up to those leaks, and they've just kind of spread faster. They did it just for three years there a year.
Okay, I'm just going to be on tar at this point.
At this point, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
I hate spending money on that.
Yeah, that would hurt when I always check off.
Prices came in high, higher than, but the market obviously is going up and up and up right now, bidding in no matter what field it is.
It just feels like the youth isn't going to pay for this.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you all. Thank you. Director Scopes.
Good evening, Honorable Board. Here for you is the bid recommendation for the asphalt pathways and replacement resurfacing project for Claude Allison Park and Handy Park. As you may recall, this was money that was set aside from the state that Senator Kavanaugh was able to recapture for us with the switching of senators at that time. So we went out to bid about three weeks ago, and were able to receive four quotes back. We did a base bid plus three additional alternates, depending on what those bids came in at, to see if we were able to do the entire project. Luckily, we were able to do that, and we're recommending to approve the bid to Bush Brothers Asphalt and Paving in the total amount of $261,000. And this will come out of the $250,000 from the MEDC grant, and then the $11,000 will come out of the parks facilities capital.
Questions from the board?
To the chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Just out of curiosity, because the other one came in at $10,000 higher, what was the difference? Or was there anything that you chose better than the other one?
They all bid the same product, or, you know, they had specifications they bid on, and they all bid the same amount of pathways. So if you look, it looks like the alternates. When he bid the alternates, they came in significantly higher than pretty much all of the rest of them. So when we totaled those up, we actually spoke to the attorney to make sure that we could take the total bid, and when we totaled it, that came out as the lowest.
Okay, thank you.
And just so everyone is aware, that we'll replace or resurface pretty much all of the pathways in both of those parks. There is a small area over at Handy Park, when you come up the pathway over by the tennis courts, that we're not redoing at this point, because we are actually looking into, as we've brought here before, about doing the pickleball courts over there, and that would be the natural pathway if that's something that is chosen to be done, that they would, you know, be going over brand new asphalt or at that point. So if we do move forward with the pickleball courts, we will can do all of that around there as well. And if we don't, we'll redo that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Trustee King.
In case I missed it, when will this be complete?
It's actually slated to be completed June 30th, so within about a month and a half.
Okay.
So pending the weather. The MEDC is going to give us a extension just in case the weather comes in, because what happens when they're redoing the asphalt is if you know at Handy Park, some of that pathway runs pretty deep in the park, and if they get a lot of rain over some time, taking their heavy equipment might tear up all of the grass. So we got a little bit of buffer, we're just waiting for that to come back. But we are slated, and that is anticipated in this grant to be done by June 30th.
Great, great, thank you.
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
Teresa says replace or in slash resurface, what's being done, a little bit of both?
Yep, so we walked the parks, and we had a contractor look really early on too, to give us a kind of rough estimate of what we were looking at. And so there are, most of them will probably be, actually, I could say it's probably 50/50. So like our main pathways leading up Claude Allison Park, which are our service drives, we call them, branching off, that will all be replaced. There are some sections along that pathway to the south that will be replaced, and then most of the rest of that will be resurfaced at that park. We actually included a new pathway that's going to be coming from where the fighter station was, sorry, where the fire station was and around the volleyball court on the other side to connect that path, so that way we have a continuous pathway that people can walk instead of dumping out into the parking lot. And then over at Handy Park, most of those pathways will be resurfaced. The back forty, as I like to call it, the north side will be resurfaced, the south side will be all brand new track, so that way, right now, it's kind of tilted, it'll actually be lifted, so that way it's better passage. And then there'll also be some crossover, so in case people don't want to go and walk all the way back, they'll be able to cut over and finish that loop. And then coming off of the sidewalk that's existing at the community center, we are actually including a pathway to come down in the drive, and we'll be doing a crosswalk across, so that way they can connect those two, and then we'll pull up another pathway right by like the shelter area. So we're really looking to have continuous pathways within our parks. Handy's a little bit more difficult because it is separated by that main entrance, so that's why we're going to put a crosswalk, but have a natural pathway in order to do that.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Taylor.
I move that we approve the bid recommendation to replace and resurface the existing asphalt pathways at Claude Allison Park and Handy Park, be awarded to Bush Brothers Asphalt Paving Inc. in the amount of $261,000. Funding for the asphalt pathway replacement service project will be allocated from GL
And the, and the MEDC.
MEDC.
Oh, and MEDC. Support. Thank you.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh, the motion is to approve the bid recommendation to replace and/or resurface the existing asphalt pathway at Claude Allison Park and Handy Park, be awarded to Bush Brothers Asphalt Paving Incorporated in the amount of $261,000. Funding from the asphalt pathway replacement resurface project will be allocated from GL 101-75600-974001 and MEDC grant. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, roll call.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Christie.
Congratulations are in order to the South Redford School District for the passage of their operating village restoration proposal, one almost two to one. It was, yes, 1,089 votes, no, 676 votes, total votes 1,765. Very, very low turnout. And you look into that a little deeper, 112 people showed up to vote in person on Election Day. That's a little more than 6%. And so we see the trend continuing that people prefer to mail in their ballots rather than, than vote in person, although this election, we did not have early voting. And it would have been a tremendous waste of money if we did. We did have some problems arise in that election. World Peace did not open again, they failed to open. That is the facility that is east of Telegraph, that precinct recently, it was 23, then it was 16, and then 12, but that is the east of Telegraph precinct. We moved it to Vandenberg, and there wasn't any problem with it being moved to Vandenberg. Going forward, you know, I'm not considering moving that voting location to Living Bread Ministries. It did seem like a good idea at the time, but there was such pushback on that that I wouldn't try that again. And the ultimate solution, I believe, would be to redraw the boundaries of that precinct. At one time, it was three different precincts. However, we're too late in the game to do that now. A more serious problem arose in the, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have had a receiving board if we didn't have help from other communities. Most communities did not have an election, and we got tremendous help from Taylor, Sarah L. Rafé, their deputy clerk, and Livonia, Susie Nash, the former clerk in Livonia. Their assistance won't, it won't be available, they won't be available in August, because their communities have their own elections. And, yeah, we wouldn't have had a receiving board without them. You know, so that really presents a big problem, a big problem. We're looking at catastrophe for the August election. looking at catastrophe for the August election. Uh, and, uh, that's it, that's, that's a much more serious problem than, uh, relocating that precinct.
Any other announcements from the board? Okay, I, I just want to say that we have, uh, employment opportunities for those that are interested in, as police officer, police dispatch, firefighters, uh, entry level and lateral, police cadet, school crossing guard, DAR bus driver, full and part-time, chief mechanic, plumbing inspector, parks maintenance supervisor, seasonal parks maintenance, seasonal marquee maintenance, uh, summer playground positions. Uh, we have hired in Officer Chris Swaboda on May sixth of two thousand and twenty-four. We have two cadets that have started Washington Police Academy, and will graduate September. The new fire station will open on May eighteenth, uh, so please come down to Norton Fire Station, the new one, and there'll be an open house from one to three. Other than that, I just want to say that we were, this past Friday, that we broke ground on our new Rec and Wellness Center. Uh, if you've been by there, you see the fencing up, and if you've been paying attention a little bit, the land is getting cleared off, and it looks a whole lot different when there's nothing there. It looks like it goes forever. So we're hoping that we stay on schedule, and we should finish up this project, uh, in the, the late winter, early winter, we're calling December twenty twenty-five. Hopefully, we can get it done sooner. So please bear with any construction traffic you happen to be, uh, experiencing, but so far, we've had none of that that I'm aware of. This is a great project for our community, and we look forward to its completion on time and on, on budget. So if there's no other business to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned.